I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so everybody's had a chance to review the agenda. Do you have any conflicts of interest? If not, we'll consider the agenda approved as presented. I'm honored to review the minutes, please.
March, thank you. March 5th, 2024, Board of Supervisors met at 9:00 a.m. with Dave Mulbauer, Vice Chair presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozar, Mulbauer, and Rosberg. Member absent was Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved hiring of Jerome Ashinger, seasonal part-time truck driver with CDL Engineers Office. A motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Dozar, to approve the dust control agreements with Mark's Dust Control and Birotech Services LLC and Wessels Oil. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rosberg, to approve the agreement related to secondary road crew working 10-hour days. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozar, to approve the purchase agreement for nine open-elect freedom vote scan precinct scanners with ballot box. Motion passed unanimously. The board discussed 2080 agreement for environmental health service between Carroll and Crawford Counties' contribution. No action was taken at this time. The board discussed the handbook update of vacation schedules, longevity, sick leave, sheriff's union language. No action was taken at this time. The board discussed 3.5 and 40-hour work weeks and second-floor deputy status on motion duly seconded. The board adjourned at 12:12 p.m. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, 4:30 p.m., preceding the next meeting.
Very close.
Very close.
No objections.
I was there, so we should have Dave sign this shortly, since I wasn't there.
You're here. You're here.
Okay.
He signed the one last week.
Okay. Since I was absent.
Sad.
All you have to do is ask for your objection or direct funding stuff, and you've done your duty.
Boring. Just kidding, of course. I just wanted to make sure we were very nice. Thank you so much. All right, they've been approved. All right, so we have our supervisors' reports and standing committees. Anybody have anything that they want to start with? Pick a volunteer.
I got just a quick.
All right, then I'll take time.
I want to, I think maybe we should put it on the agenda for at least start discussion, which we're starting right now, actually. Next week for our land use, what do you call that? A land use ordinance or something to that effect? And the reason-
Land use plan.
Land use plan, thank you.
Land use management plan? What was it called? Do you remember?
This, I'm struggling.
A plan was in there in land use.
Yeah. It sounds about right.
And here's the only reason I say it. I think you still have everything, just like we do with the wind turbines, on that construction agreement or construction plan. You do it where the cities or anybody can do their, you know, if they come to them, they can basically have a vote on what they want, you know, you can come closer or whatever, you know, but it's, we have to have, like, where we have a plan for development and all that stuff.
That was the thing you're trying, the thing that we would have been watered on, we would have tried to write an ordinance, so the court would have just said, "What's your land?"
That's right.
And we had none, so it was basically, we were toast immediately. Wouldn't have made it through the first breath of court. The, so we, I mean, Harlan, or, excuse me, Shelby, I believe, obviously had one of those. We don't. I think to help our county grounds outside of the cities, we need to have one of them, and then we need to make sure our towns, as long as it's important to them, have them. That way, like, don't you remember how we looked at the pipeline and it curved in on Dennison on this one, but there was no land use thing, so we couldn't argue that for development because we didn't have it as developer? Otherwise, they probably would have came to us, and we'd have known about it.
That's right. It would have established the public development areas, so, yeah.
They did go to the city of Dennison. I mean, it was in November of 2021.
Yeah.
And talked about the airport. Terry Crawford, as the engineer, signed off on their plan, so we would have had no grounds there either, because it was the city of Dennison.
But we would have had on the outside of Dennison.
On the outside, yeah.
Then we would, because, did you know about it?
No.
Did you?
Found out.
Not until I seen it.
Not until we-
Seen it in the paper.
Until we got told we were going to have a meeting.
Right. That's right.
So, that's my point. What, sorry.
On that note, did you guys get that email about Iowa Senate File 411, bill to prevent local control and wind solar? It was from Heather Stansel. Just found out today that this bill is back on the table for consideration and comes before a subcommittee tomorrow at noon. If passed, it's written currently, it could lead to the repeal of any county ordinance that has to do with energy production, which includes wind, solar, and CO2. So- I guess my point is-
Your big pockets.
We could come up with an ordinance next week and talk about it, which we shouldn't be prepared or we can do, but yet, here's another step by the state in the direction of taking away our ability and authority to-
Protect our properties.
Or if this is due to the proposed wind farm in Woodbury County, and they're just, the locals are very upset over there.
Well, you guys will be there tomorrow.
Yeah.
So you are.
Oh, down in the Ohio, they're gone.
Yeah. Are you going tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh. Senate File, was it 411?
411.
411, it sounded like.
Very short. Almost a 911.
Yeah, so was.
Thank you, Dave.
And it states the purpose of that, Dave, too. I mean-
Yep, the bill prohibits the county or city from adopting an ordinance, motion, or resolution amendment that limits consumer access to an energy source.
On another note, on one of the House files that did pass, 2569, that's the Highway 31. I actually went to the legislative coffee Saturday morning and made sure that our senator understood why that's important. And this was something, I don't know that I brought up at this table before, but without a four lane, we, if we would build an industrial park and want to certify us for grants and stuff like that, we can't. But that's one of the first prerequisites for certification or development things. It's, you have to ask Stephanie. She actually is the one that briefed me on how all that works, but-
So even though 30 is four lanes, where it runs through Dennison?
But yeah, but it's not really a four-lane highway outside of our little area of town. I guess it stretches into the county in a few minutes or a few seconds.
Used to be.
Yeah, it used to be. Actually, I was looking at that. That'd be a nice area for a bike tour, but we might need it for four lane. Hopefully, we need it for four lane. Anyway, the-
Who would you want to bring in for to talk about this land management?
I don't really know if I got somebody to talk to. I mean, I just want to get it discussed.
Is that a county attorney, Colin Martha?
Yeah, maybe Martha or Colin need to explain to us what we need to have and what we have to do.
Or did Shelby County, how did they do there? I'm just curious.
I think that at one point in time, we had a copy of Shelby County's. I think CPO had sent that to kind of show.
I think you're right.
I think I remember that. And of course, Dickinson County and Palo Alto must have one, because they referred to it in the drafts that they were using, so we could maybe get copies of those and pick and choose what's relevant to our county.
I don't know, just as far as development goes, after hearing about the issue in Perry, I mean, just put development back to the front of my mind. You know, I'm out, obviously, I think about development constantly, but, you know, the little details that we need to be taking care of to, for development, you know what I mean? I just assume boards in the past didn't realize the measure of importance on future ramifications and ordinances or anything like that, or probably would have had something like this. I mean, now that we can understand that, I think we probably at least need to get going.
So, the one that we did have, that Dwayne Sink had found in his cabinet, I believe, was from some time in 1978. So, he said he only had one copy of that, but he doesn't, when I went and asked about it, he didn't know where it had gone. He thinks that we still had it. I'd like to see what that looked like.
Okay.
I think maybe Jerry Boat was going to read through it. It might be in with her paperwork, so I'll call her and see if she has it, because remember, she wanted to look it over. It was only about this thick. It was not very thick.
But, you know. What was that?
The land use plan that we did have from, I believe, 1978, or, yeah, a long time ago.
I don't even remember to see us in that.
Yeah, we just, well, we just showed it. It wasn't relevant because it was so old that it wouldn't stand.
Why would it be relevant? I mean, if it's passed?
I don't know.
How, do we have to, is it like what Paul's plans were every five years, you know, basically, out of year every year? Is that how that works?
Process was, but I'll see if I can-
I don't even know.
I mean, because I mean, if we pass a land use management plan now in 2024, we would hope that it would still be relevant in 2074.
Yeah.
So if they pass one in 78, would that still be relevant in 2024?
That's a good question. Maybe we better have a lawyer here.
Well, first of all-
Well, we need to find it first, I guess.
Yeah. See what it says. Maybe we kind of get ahold of, we get ahold of the, either Martha or Colin and-
I'll send a text.
Charlie.
And see if she can look through.
Can dispatch Martha?
Yeah.
One copy of it that would be filed somewhere, you know? Digital or something.
But if we do that, then wait, put it on the meeting agenda when he's done his research.
Yeah.
Ask him to put, bring it to him before the board when he's, tell us what we need to do. Yeah, Martha knows a lot of that land or bad kind of stuff. That's why I just, but you still probably-
Either way, running by him, whoever has the time to do it, prefer.
Okay, well, that's all I've got.
All right, very good. Thank you. Dave, what do you have?
Yeah, I've got a few things here. Since we're talking about County Attorney's Office, I did just forward Colin, and maybe you already did, the 2080 agreement from, she just sent back, you will review it, 2080 agreement with Kerry Kersey and-
I did not send it to him.
I just did. Steve, he responded back. He's going to look at that. That way, we can check our boxes to make sure. And he said he got it from John Worden as well. He gets to get his eyes on that, make sure that it passes a test, that we can move forward with signing that 2080. And the other thing, I brought over that mail we had in from Indio, that legal notice.
Yeah.
Talking, he's going to reach out to Christie Harshberger from ISAC about that, because he received the same letter himself.
Colin did.
The legal notice. I do kind of recall, and I want to, it'd be good that he's going to ask Christie. At one of our ISAC meetings, they were talking about that they were getting some letters sent from this Indio in that it was a scam thing.
Oh.
And that pitch it, but-
He's going to check with Christie.
Do our due diligence, check to make sure that it is legit or false, and if it is false, throw it away and move on. The other thing, I was going to meet with Lynn, Public Health, if we can get done before noon at 11, because we had a short agenda. They want me to introduce Kevin Green. Kevin Green is from Sioux County Public Health. He's always sitting on the board with him. I actually sit by him all the time at the Board of Directors meeting. So they invited me to kind of make that introduction on a phone conference.
Okay.
And they wanted to talk about how they, kind of what Webster County does, but they're having a hard time getting a hold of Mark Campbell. He's been busy, talking about how they have their public health fund that helps with the ebb and flows and potentially going to have to have the tax asking every year, but yet they have that fund. But they're weirdly going to walk us through the details on it, how it works, pros and cons. I'm just simply going to be there to help with the introduction and go from there, and then you'll hear about it as what they come up with. We did have a call, I know both of us had a call from Dave Rice the other day, concerned about Perry closing in Tyson, which we'll see then at noon. Our bureau, he'll be there. Which, that's concerning.
Very.
Did you hear that? There was a closing in Perry.
Oh, yeah, I did hear.
So what was Dave Rice?
Just about potentially, you know, for short jobs here in Crawford. Does there any opportunity to have, like, our Economic Development CDC put out feelers? Or if they're wondering just if we can maybe fill some of the void of our short-
Short, so.
Staffing on employees within the county through businesses and, but then just asking how we could, as a county, reach out and put feelers out there.
We're looking?
Yeah.
I would assume that Smithfield and Monogram are probably already on that, mind you, but I, I don't think that's the worst idea, to have CDC maybe work with things.
Right.
Are you suggesting they reach out to them directly, or that they reach out to our local entities and see what they're doing about it, or what?
Well, I'm sure Tyson's trying to move them to plants that they need help, you know? So, I mean, I would just think, you know, you just go out and make these people aware that, hey, we're looking in Dennison, and that's a short drop from where you're at.
Yeah, and I don't know whether that means talking to Perry City themselves, Perry's Economic Development, Smithfield, or Tyson themselves. I don't know how that would look, but I mean, to me, that's a question for Paul.
Yeah.
Maybe a multi-angle approach.
Maybe all of the above.
Right, which we'll talk more-
If I was Paul, I'd reach out to both the plans and see how he can help. That would be what I would do.
And then, of course, ISAC. Gene and I are going to leave this evening, because we're going to be there first thing of the day at the Capitol in the morning, and then they have the HR seminar in the afternoon. Then I have a Board of Directors meeting after that, and then we'll go right into Spring Conference. I'll see you there on Thursday and Friday.
Can I interrupt quick? Since you guys are going to be there, and I won't be able to be there, make sure you hit as many senators as you can, about four, about 30. I mean, I hit Jason pretty hard, but just the development aspect, I mean, that's, and then remind them, because they want, one of their big conversations now is making it six lanes on 80 between Omaha and Des Moines, which their big complaint about doing 30 was, well, we'd have to add bridges. Well, they'll have to redo every damn bridge on 80, you know, and if you, if you build a four lane across this all the way to the river, which it sounds like Nebraska's already in process of doing their bypass around Blair. I don't know for sure, but that's what I heard. That would alleviate a boatload of traffic off of 80 in Iowa, because pretty much everybody north of 30, and probably a lot of them even a little south of 30, will run 30 over to Omaha instead of going down and fight through Des Moines and Omaha, and then once Nebraska gets theirs done, because their plans are to finish a 30 all the way out to Grand Island at some point, and they've already got a lot of intermittent parts of it done. So, I mean, you finish that, we'd be able to skip over Omaha, Lincoln, and Des Moines, you know, a lot of this part of Iowa. So, I mean, that's going to pull a bunch of traffic off of 80 and help with the wear and tear on that highway.
Tell me if I'm wrong on what I think in here. 80 is still an interstate, still a federal highway.
Yeah.
You go to six lanes, does not alleviate any of our heavier truck traffic with livestock and grain.
Exactly, and I'm fighting that one on Naco to try to keep that. In fact, I was negotiating with the railroad this weekend.
Being that it is interstate, federal, you're going to spend state dollars on an interstate to make it nice for car traffic, it does not alleviate your agricultural concerns.
No, it doesn't at all. I mean, as far as the, for your 90 and 96,000-pound trucks that are legal on all of our two lanes, and actually, our four lanes that are US, and even US highways, like 30, that's what doesn't make any sense to me. The interstate system is US highway. So is Highway 30, so is 20, but we can drive on that. I just, yeah. The logic escapes me, but then that's Washington DC, correct? But the, you're right. I mean, we still can't express, if we're bringing livestock out of here, or if you have cattle over in that part of Iowa, you can't express it to, you know, Omaha or wherever you might be going to, because we just don't have the highways.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
So that eight lane that's coming from, you've heard that through where?
Six lane.
Six lane.
They, that's, that's one of the, the Omaha to Des Moines is one of their potential, one of their development projects that they want to get moving forward. It's not in the, I don't think it's in the plans yet.
Okay.
But it's, that's what, what's-
Just a thought in somebody's head?
Probably more than just a thought, but it's, that's one, you know, because just like between Lincoln and Omaha, it's all six lane now, you know? They want to do the same thing between Des Moines and Omaha, which someday might be nice, but when you've got other rural areas of the state, I'm sorry to keep interrupting. When you've got other rural areas of the state that need development, I mean, we got to have that stuff for any kind of development access, you know? I mean, not only are the industries asking, but not to be certified as.
We need a comment. Wasn't that the point, though, of 20 going four lanes to alleviate some of the pressure on?
Yeah, that was, but, but look, Highway 30 is still busier than 20. I mean, we should have probably been ahead of them. Highway 30 is busier than 20. Yeah, look at your highway reports on traffic queues. In fact, they say that only 80 is consistently busier than 30. 35, and the interstates potentially are busier, but, I mean, 30 is one of the, they, for a long time, they called it the second busiest corridor in the state.
Because you can drive faster.
And safer. Pull that word up.
And safer.
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 Safer. Unless Gene's driving faster.
And you can, you can, you can expedite your time and move your animals to market faster.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm-
I also had a freaking 12 meeting last week. It was a shorter meeting, with some of our expenses, nothing really out of the blue. Our executive directors report, I can show you guys all that transit report. Transit backup for what their usage is. One of their bigger topics is that 10 million West Liberty Meat Poultry Loan Fund that we granted out.
Yep.
West Liberty, without saying too much, could not meet all compliances. So, we, we have the Executive Loan Review Committee, which gives us our recommendations as a full board, recommended letting that expire. How was the March 8th that expired? So, we did not take, we take any action to extend it. That, that loan will grant, or loan will expire at this time. Sure, did I have your head hurting back from rip that it didn't? So that'll give $10 million back in that fund for us to move forward with other projects, or West Liberty could come back later after they're getting their ducks in the rook or supply. So with that, we did increase some funding to other grants that were like, we did it for Mary Anne Specialty Foods and some other things, but then we asked Scott Stephmann, said, "I wanted your loan officer to answer." Overseas, what these funds are looking for, so interested parties that want to utilize these funds, and he's going to reach back out.
Have you ever went down and consulted here at the festival? Now, he don't have us, he told, I think he goes to Critic's Camps, or his, I don't quote me on that, but someone I was told I liked was, I mean, maybe he, you know, he's a mover and shaker. Maybe he'd be interested in doing something.
This, this would be for, you know, expansion of our facilities.
Are they established?
No, no, it can be revamping, upgrading, new, or the facilities themselves, helps with processing. But it's just good and bad. I mean, concerning that West Liberty wasn't able to get their, yeah, everything in mind to move forward, but yet that also frees up more money to do other projects, and it's, you know, the idea still is not to sit on it. It's to get it out there.
What about something like cold storage? Would they be, I mean, for meats?
Potentially, yes. I mean-
Because that's what cold storage is obviously for, but something like that be in line for this?
Possibly.
Okay, just asking.
Think outside the box.
The biggest thing is just to have them reach out to reach out well, and then they can go through all the nitty-gritty details and figure out what, because sometimes, too, we had it in other cases where they don't quite fit the box of what the USDA Loan and Meat and Poultry Fund is looking for, but yet we have EDA funds and other revolving loan funds and other things that we can utilize that aren't necessarily this exact requirement. The biggest thing is to sit down, if there is an interested group, a party or individual company that they sit down and reach out to. We did talk briefly about some of the derelict buildings and Allois stuff and that. Basically, if you have anybody interested in, oh, in our city council, cities, towns, reach out, reach out to Carl Janning over there.
We'll charter over to be in touch with them.
Yeah.
They got, they got a mess on their hands, $30.
And it's, you know, they've had some really good success stories where they've had houses given to them. They've said, hey, this house hasn't been utilized, nobody's paying taxes on it. Gift it to Region 12 to remodel and get back livable again. And the funds are for that, but there's a fine line, too, because you can't, you can only spend so much. We only have so much to spend to revitalize these homes, so you can't take a home that's completely falling in on itself and get it back.
Spend $100,000 if I have to sell $50.
Right, so I mean, there is a line to walk of what can be fixed back up. But the good thing is, you know, that it's been successful. We've seen some success with, with the Homes for Iowa, with the remodeling of other homes, derelict buildings and things like that, so.
I did mention on a call not that long ago to contact Region 12 for charter, hopefully again.
But also, goes back to Kyle, what we said many times, you need a horse to water. Oh, you're not wrong.
But you need that person that's willing to do that paperwork, because just like any other government program.
That's what we have city clerks for.
Yeah, because back when, you know, you-
Not that they're not doing anything.
You have the now-paying assistance that gives you $24,999 for rehab as part of the loan process. It was a lot of hoops to jump through, but it was a fabulous program that Dennison personally used.
But on the other hand, they're not on an island all alone. You know, they have a very good staff at Region 12 that helps walk them through all those details and hoops.
You just have to be willing to do those.
You got to jump through that.
Taking the horse to the water, you know?
Right.
Yeah, so, but I think somebody should probably make sure that your city clerk is doing that, because it'd be beneficial to charter, I think.
Yeah.
Otherwise, not really a lot. I mean, there's going to be another open meeting, it's record best practice for publics. Meetings workshop that's coming up here. They do that about once a year. You know, it's March 13th, it's tomorrow. You can go online. Business, that's normal. Not a, too much else to report.
Great. Just keep going around the table. Frank, what do you have?
Wesco meeting last night. We, unfortunately, we had five board members there, so we didn't have a forum. So we just discussed some things, and we're going to do email any confirmation or any motion that we need to have approved throughout the next week or so. One thing they've started putting out are these impact reports. I'll pass this around. But I think last month I reported that Wesco was concerned about their income, and for the month of March, they had net income of $475,000. So I think they were $5,000 total income for the months prior to February, and February they had $475,000 above their expenses. A large portion of that was a $270,000 grant that they got issued to them for the construction of a home, and so they are looking for lots over the next month. They have to spend the money by next March.
Hopefully not.
And so it's something that has to be done. They're getting bids from Kyron Lumber and Wall Lake Lumber, and then go directly to contractors, and we'll see what, but with the $270,000 grant, I think, I mean, Wesco still thinks they're not going to get it built for that, so they might have, you know, $50,000 to $75,000 of their own money in, you know, in a new home, which still is pretty good.
Do they have any lots kind of picked off?
They've looked at a lot of lots. We kind of had a consensus, since we had to do a motion, that we were going to allow them to spend up to $40,000 on a lot. So definitely, they've looked at some lots that were $15,000, some as high as $35,000.
Thank you.
And the biggest thing of that is, as far as dirt work that's going to be needed, because- And the biggest thing of that is as far as dirt work that's gonna be needed, cause it's non-basement home. Flat ranch style, they're gonna build it, five bedrooms. Or, or excuse me, a five-person home with three bedrooms and they're gonna use the one as an office, cause that's be a four. Person home to qualify for the grant, but they're gonna build them like it'll hold five people in case they don't change the. Cause we're trying to build them to make them, depending on what they do with the law, if they make you go to a four-person home or if they still let you use a five-person home. Five-person certainly is more profitable. For Wesco. Um, one of the things also that. Uh, Wesco has is what is they do what is called the CISO assessment. And that determines the rate of pay that they get for the clients that they have. And these CISO assessments are done every three years per client and they're not all done. You know, like this is, this is the third year, we have to do them all. It's throughout that three-year time period, I think she said. This year they have eighteen, but they've done a, what, um, Deirdre said is they've done a better job. With those assessments and if you do a better job assessing what your clients need. And you show that they need more stuff, then the state will pay more per client. And so they think they've done a better job with their CISO assessments, which has also increased. The amount of money that Wesco gets from the state. I said, I'll pass this around. That's really everything, I guess, that I got.
Alrighty, what do you have today, Kyle?
Well, start off with the head of conservation board meeting and. And we'll take some action later on, the point that they're, on the conservation board and the, the. The meat and potatoes of the, the meeting the other night with Dr. Tancredi and Dr. Mason were out. And, uh. Pretty sure we're getting a new. Um, it's not a hundred percent, I'm gonna say it's a high percentage, Mary might be able to discuss it more, but. A, a new shelter, enclosed shelter at Yellow Smoke or went through their foundation. Through the Tancredi and I don't know, I'm sure what they said the name was, but it's a foundation that they got some funds that they wanna build this. New enclosed shelter house on the south side of the lake, so.
It's up by Kelly's building?
Yeah, up in there, be- between there and the old tubing hill, I mean. Uh, he originally, they had originally came with this grand plan, but. Through conversations, they've got it down to where the conservation board felt comfortable with it. Uh, so I kinda think they were giving them the okay to start developing the plans. The only thing he asked about the board of supervisors was. That the gen- funds generated from this building be placed into a. I'm guessing like a cabin fund or whatever for the maintenance of, of this building to help with the maintenance.
Separate from the cabin fund now, but.
Yeah, so I said that would should not be a problem, so. If somebody wants to donate substantial. And, and originally, I think the building was more than what the staff could handle, but it just wasn't. But doesn't hold the, I think they've downsized it enough to where it can host events up to like a hundred and seventy-five people, so. Uh, I think it'd be well received.
So is it still at a hundred and seventy-five people then? Is that?
Yeah, I think that's what it was, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy, but it probably says it in here. Dr. Tancredi, I just love listening to him, because he's just. I mean, he knows, but he just, the way he bounces around, so it's kinda hard to. Cliff notes, but he, he touches them all, but it's just the way he, a hundred seats, a hundred and fifty. Be a nice addition to the park out there, so, and it's great to have, uh, people that wanna.
When do they think they're gonna start that or what's the plan?
Like they want to get this season yet, so.
Wow.
At least have the dirt work done and the frame up over winter, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a picture of what that's gonna look like?
Well, you know, the original plan, new plan, so it's, it's kind of.
Combination of both.
It's kind of, like I said, it's, but here is the proposed, uh. Layout of the new building, so.
Is that the actual view that?
Yep, that's from where it would be at, so.
And there's plenty of room there for parking and all that kind of stuff, I can't.
Part of the concern with parking, but, uh, they figured of the parking at the nature center. And then it ain't too far of a walk from the parking from the tubing hill.
Okay.
Sure.
But if that turned out to be a bigger problem, they've got, he had another plan drawn up to where they could develop some more parking there, so.
Wow.
They, there's a lot of thought went into it and they're, they're kind of really.
Really nice.
Yeah, we just don't want our park to turn into that song, gay paradise.
Yeah, an amphitheater, that's, there's still plans to have the amphitheater.
Alright.
That would be cool.
Yep.
I've, I've often thought that we need stuff like that. I mean, we're.
Yeah, I think.
Little outside, you know, orchestra stuff and.
Players.
Bands and.
Yeah. It's, I think it would be a great, a great addition.
Looks like he touches all the points here on, you know, drop off lane for traffic and efficiency concerns.
A lot of thought, there's a lot of thought into it, uh. Yeah, they've, uh, they're taking some ownership, they put the disc golf in and out there now and, uh. All benefit in our park a lot, so.
But, like, like the amphitheater now, would that face like towards the lake? Where like if you played and had a, had a band up there to play the National Anthem over the porch or something, that'd be kinda cool, where it can ring out over the valley.
Yeah, it should, yeah. And, uh, through that also, uh, Deniston City Hub is working on a storm siren out there by the nature center. They must have some funds to develop storm readiness and they're hired population or. Places that don't have a storm siren and, and Yellow Smoke is considered one of them.
Consider that to be.
Some people that sit around this table have experienced. A storm out there. I don't know if you rode it out or not, or if you went.
I didn't, my camper didn't ride it out very well either that time.
Yeah.
All over the place, so I did not realize you were out there.
That was your, that was the last camping trip you went on. So, I, kudos to them. I don't, sounded like they have the funds to do it. Potentially, they might be coming, uh, Cory Snoggin said, the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand, but he said he. I thought he said he's got the funds for it, so.
That's kind of exciting.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, I think so, uh. You wanna discuss the, your, the, the county farm is still, uh. Worked, worked in progress very good, but I did reach out to our AC poll this morning and they said they wouldn't be willing, cause we have until Friday. Might be busy Friday signing papers, so, but it's all legit stuff that. The Omaha Community Foundation has got, you know, heard learning, they got a lot of questions. That they're getting answered either through Craig or I or through the FSA office directly and, uh.
I mean, the biggest obstacle that we're at right now is that the FSA has, um. Adjusted gross income limit of nine hundred thousand, and if you get over that, you don't qualify, you receive ten payments.
Oh.
And so the thing that we haven't really been able to identify is, you know, if you're a foundation, a nonprofit. How does that fit into that nine hundred thousand dollar adjusted gross income? Their, their population might exceed that with all that they do.
Oh, yeah.
Right, their total income, right, I would assume is way over nine hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Um, but is that net, you know, I asked, I don't, I don't know what exactly FSA determines as adjusted gross income. And the IRS determines as adjusted gross income, uh, from looking at the paperwork. That I've seen anyway, that the IRS will give FSA the tax returns that those people have filed. So I think that's probably the biggest obstacle that.
I think so.
Seems like to me, I mean, they, the Omaha Foundation put forth an email stating how they thought. That it would be structured as far as with us, the owner, them, the tenant, and a, uh. Land management agreement with Pheasants Forever. I think they were spot on in how they explained it to FSA that it would work. And, uh, so I don't think that part is the issue. I think now it's the, my, it's the adjusted gross. Well, thanks for what you guys are doing.
So.
Lot to it.
We'll see. Well, like, you and I discussed last week, that we really didn't know it was gonna be this difficult until we.
Anything that happens at this barn side away though.
It does. I mean, the thing is, I guess moving forward, if we, if we go the, the route where we have an individual and do it short term. I think we still continue down this road, uh, see if we can't, you know, long-term have an arrangement put together. You know, something we probably should have started four months ago, five months ago. You know, but. We'll get it into CRP one way or another.
Well, I'd say it's twenty-twenty, I mean, we're learning this because we didn't know it.
Right, right.
By Friday, it's not all worked out, what's the?
We have an individual, uh, had a step forward and he'll sign the papers and then we're gonna agree enough with the county attorney that they agreed to. Yeah, it's just a signature.
Either way. We, we have some, an interested party that will step up and the way it works out, all the funds that would go to him. He'll turn around through contract, go directly to the fair, right?
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, they, that person that I stepped up, said that they would give that ten percent to the. Fair board or, I, I really think that to the project of the new show reign specifically.
Who, I guess I gotta ask, I'm just thinking out loud, you guys. Who carries like liability insurance on the county farm? We do, the county does, cause we own it. Would he have to carry, I mean, just, you know.
Oh, yeah, he would need to have, I mean, I'm sure he has insurance.
I'm sure.
Just cause we carry our own, you know, even an individual farmer that rents, is gonna have their own liability for what X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Just make, make sure that he's not caught in a bad situation because his name is listed.
That's the only thing I thought of was something of that nature in their agreement would be that. He would be able to retain portion of ten percent to cover his expenses incurred by doing that, if he has to have his liability insurance.
That's what I kind of, yeah, if someone's out there hunting on the CRP ground, it's not public hunting, just an accident happens. You hate to see this.
That's public hunting already, so.
The CRP part is, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
I just hate to see this individual get into a bad spot because it's trying to do something good for county by donating or giving those funds back. The fair.
But we will continue to march down this path to where these tax dollars that are. Will be benefited by all the taxpayers in some way, shape or form. Like I said, plan that this board has specifically expressed interest and been given that. Done. That's just one piece of the puzzle, cause we get this one done and there's, as we know, there's more contracts that need to be addressed, so.
Well, I hope you're taking notes on what all needs to happen, so that we.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it's been a lot, a lot of learning to go on. Um, I just take a minute.
Go ahead.
I've been, uh, working, trying vigorously to keep the city center and the, uh. Public health building moving, so what we've done is we kind of drew it out a little bit more so we can see the buildings. I went through it with another public health board member, Marcy, and him, the, uh, director of public health. Identified exactly, you know, with a very open mind of what they would like to have done. With each one of these offices as far as removing, uh, uh, the sinks or taking out a wall or. Putting some protection around one of these, uh, areas where we're gonna have the little gates, uh, what doors go back on. Uh, had a good plan, but we put on an RFP for the painting upstairs and for the IT room, uh, to get that finished. Because every time we've had an RFP for the last year, it came to a stop because. The, uh, room that we're gonna be using for the computer, the IT room, uh, has this water above it and. We can't move forward till that mop water is redirected and we can start putting the work that we need in that field, cause. It's like what came first, the chicken or the egg, they can't move over till we have the internet and all that done. Uh, we can't do that till the water's removed, so today I'm going to meet with, uh, Totten. Uh, just to get the plan now that we know where there's gonna be, uh, sinks and make sure that we get this water rearranged, get that out of. The IT room, which everybody agrees there should not be a water pipe above all of the computer equipment. House, not so much maybe.
No, no, I don't disagree, I mean, that's, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep it moving. Uh, I'm hoping, uh, that we can get an RFP out there here in the next couple of days. Get the basement, uh, cause we got the upstairs, it's gonna be getting painted, uh, and cleaned. We only had one person show up for the painting, we had it on the internet or on our website, we had it on our Facebook page and in the newspaper. So we had a bid for an interested party to come up. Corey Gaskell did, did come up to look at the IT room. To make sure that nothing had changed since our original, uh, IT. And there are a few things that he's gonna need to do, such as, uh, put some wiring in that big room, that's gonna be the Zoom room, where we're gonna have Wick that, the big room.
Yep.
So we want to get all that done before we did drywall, so we're trying to just get this methodically worked out so that we can get.
It was a process.
It's a process. I think we've made great progress, you know, up until we knew exactly how we wanted those offices configured in the basement. We really were at a kind of a standstill. I don't wanna go forward and do a bunch of cleaning, where we're still gonna have to be doing drywall. So, uh, hopefully we're gonna keep it moving, but I, I hope we have the meeting to ten thirty, cause that's the only time Totten could come. But that's going to ISAC, uh, but otherwise, uh.
We can make that happen.
Yeah, Jake's gonna be going.
Are we meeting with Farm Bureau today?
So that's kind of why.
Really?
Yes.
The rooster.
Forgot about that.
The rooster came, that's where he got the rib.
That's, would have been nice to know. Not on here anywhere.
Oh, I'm sorry. They sent out an email and then, uh, kind of on.
And it's not on your agenda anywhere, y'all are meeting. Forum, no bother, and not on an agenda. The whales, anyway. Thank you.
Well, good morning. Good morning, spring day. It's the free, this is a, like, get out of jail free card this spring.
Yeah.
That's unbelievable. Unbelievable, great weather, so, um. Uh, they're, they're working on the shop down in Vanilla, if you've been by there down there this morning, so that's coming together really good. And, um, I think I'm gonna get ten point to do the concrete slab right away sometime this summer, you know, once the building's up and. Let's put it in next year's budget, there's, there's already something in next year's budget, but we're just gonna get the concrete done, connect your street and.
The holes finish at the neck of the street, right?
Yeah, we'll do that concrete out front, that was a part of the building project, but it just, if you've been up to Sleswick, it's just nice and we can connect everything.
Well, I just bought down city here where you clean that up.
Yeah, we did it down city, yeah, it's just, so anyhow, it's coming together really nice.
They made their parents are on the street, my sir.
Oh, everything, yeah, that turned out really, really well, so. Uh, great crew, uh, they started up, they're working down there on T Avenue, gonna wrap that project up and then we'll go up to H Avenue and. The year is beginning, so, um, and then the bridge crew there up on a hundred and tenth street, that's that bridge that was damaged. Last fall up there to south E sixteen, so we'll get that knocked out and then we got a few little patching things we're gonna do and then they're gonna go over to. Tom Ledwig's, just, uh, west of his house, there's a pony trust there that we're gonna take out, kinda like we did down by Dean Huntley's. I think, or Hunter, 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 over there, uh, where we keep the cockpit abutments in place and just, uh, each pile cap and. Build a new bridge on the existing abutment, so, so anyhow, we're off and running.
So that pony truck, well, what we do is that?
Those we just cut up and scrap.
Then we scrap them.
Yeah, we kind of want to go.
Once you know what it's gonna need in from all factors.
Yeah, somebody really wanted it, you know, or needed it somewhere, but we.
Do you have someone that's interested?
In a pony dress?
That, that specific bridge.
That specific bridge. Okay, there you go.
So do you want it sealed bid or?
Well, probably what we should do, we've never sold one.
Okay.
So. I have to think about that, you know, because normally what we do is we just cut it up and scrap it. And you know, you probably, probably should advertise it because you could have other people that say, well, I didn't have a chance to that. Or or we sell it at the sale bar. Okay, what we could do is we could just take one trust piece down to the sale bar and it couldn't have, didn't have to be, it just, we could just advertise and say, hey, we're gonna sell this bridge.
About photo. You'd have to have the photo and say where you go look at it.
Here's, here's part of it or, you know, something like that. I think that's what we do. I think that's the fair way to do it.
We've had really good luck doing that in the past, even with the motor grader blades that we used to have. Chris Brandt after, and he, he appreciated at the sale bar and I just can go and get whatever.
Yeah, I, I, that, that's what we'll do. We'll just start on a Saturday morning. We'll make sure it's advertised. So it's advertised in the paper and then that's the fairest way that anybody in the area knows that, hey, there's a trust being sold at the seller. So, yeah, that's good. I mean, and then we'll, we'll probably want to make sure that, you know, we'll have to kind of get an idea what it weighs to make sure we're getting at least scrap iron price for it, kind of set a minimum. So, but yeah.
That sounds smart.
Uh it'd be next week. Uh oh, well, let's see, not next week, not next, uh the twenty, it'd be the last week of March. It's the twenty sixth is the sale and then the twenty seventh, we're having our lunching out at the park. So twenty sixth, Tuesday the twenty sixth, two weeks uh gives the uh.
For you to know, Craig, I mean, pass that on if you're interested party.
It won't be there.
It won't be on the hour.
No, no, because we, we don't have it out yet. So it, it's gonna be down the road here a month, six weeks. Before we do that, it's just gonna be a Saturday sale. We'll just have to advertise it.
What time is your safety meeting?
Uh you know, we, we're gonna start it like this one, we're starting a little bit earlier. Um it's gonna be in that nine thirty, nine, nine thirty. I have to check for sure, but we're doing the work zone safety. Uh and then we'll eat eleven thirty, twelve o'clock. So, yeah. And I got to stay at least ordered a hundred. You know, there's usually about fifty people there. So I ordered uh what, a hundred and hundred and seventy pieces of chicken. So at least get three or a little more mashed potatoes and gravy and buns. Then we're gonna do like some gravy casserole or something and desserts to kind of go with it. And thank you all too, by the way, for being to help out with that. So I think it'll be nice, something a little different. So uh so yeah, it's on the twenty sixth, twenty seventh is uh, the, the sale's on the twenty sixth and then the uh, see, it's on the twenty seventh. Uh city bridge fund, so we, you know, the, the bridge over there by Vale, we're getting the million and a half dollars, good news. Um the thing is, I don't have, I didn't realize that this is a pass through, so it has to come through our local budget. You know, I thought these were federal dollars and they're usually the federal dollars get paid out of our farm to market fund and they never go through the local budget. So not a, not a deal breaker because we really don't know for sure when we're gonna let it. Uh so we have this, this timeframe within which we can build this and then we have this timeframe within which we can build the economy. We don't want the two to be closed at the same time if we can avoid it.
Where's this one?
Well, you got it. You got, you got this one right here, right on the edge of that, okay, across the east foyer. And then you have this one, and then I think this one's the one that went twenty seven, twenty eight here on Highway fifty nine. So we gotta be careful that we don't.
Shut down all that?
Shut down all of them at the same time. So so the timing of this, so backing up the reason, there's a couple of things. Timing, so we don't have two bridges shut down at the same time and then the money all passes through the local budget. Okay, so we're gonna have one and three quarter million dollars that's gonna come through our local budget. That's not currently in the budget that I did for twenty point five. That's not a deal breaker. You just have, once we know when we are gonna do it, we just do it.
And they're supporting revenues, so it's.
Right, you just offset it with revenues that come in.
Yeah.
And so this is one of the challenges of trying to do, you know, a project that you maybe let in February. I don't know when the contractor is gonna start. He could do it all in twenty, you know, and one fiscal year where he could not start till later and have it all in the other fiscal year. So you almost gotta budget it, budget for the expense and the revenue in two years. So I, I think we just sit tight. We already got the budget and we just sit tight to wait and see what happens. And then we can always have got the budget to account for it. That makes sense, really. So it's just, we don't know because if this thing here moves along, in my opinion, this is the highest priority. We have three years, the day of the signing of the agreement, to get this done. And you know, I mean, we've got quite a bit of time on this one as well, but you know, we're dealing with the railroad and everything falls into place. This one's gonna go.
Twenty seven is when they're projecting?
Well, that's as well here. I mean, we're working on this. I was hoping for a, a letting sometime in twenty twenty five if it's on a re-bridge. It's looking like right now it's probably gonna be later in twenty twenty five. We could conceivably, if we had this already, we could let this in January, okay, in twenty twenty five. And in hopes, you know, so then, you know, in hopes that this is done before you start that.
When done, Reed one will be a little bigger project though, won't it? How long do you think it'll take?
This is gonna take much longer than this, you know, so typically if we let that in January, February, that would be done by September. Before we would even let this typically. Okay, so you just run a little bit of a risk there, but I mean, if we get them both ready and we, you know, we get this thing ready, we get it for, it led in January of twenty twenty five, I think we do it and then we hold on, let this one in October. You know, hold this one, I, I wanna make sure this gets done. I wanna make sure both of them get done. Um but the timing could work out. Just there's a lot of uncertainty. They're working on both designs. So.
Oh, George, I've seen on the DOT Facebook pages that they're planning with Richard, placing on Dallas City on Highway thirty, twenty, twenty six.
Yeah, there's one down here. I don't know a lot about that yet.
I think one of just the Boyer River Bridge.
Right there, yeah, right there.
Yeah. So.
I think that's what I. Yeah.
All our projects going on. People are gonna become the Crawford County and can't get across any bridges.
Well, there's a lot of work even this year. I mean, Highway thirty nine, I've got a lot on your first on the agenda. I mean, Highway thirty nine project, uh north of Deloitte scheduled to start next week, you know, which is good. Uh that needs to be done. So they're gonna start on that, uh the Highway fifty nine project, which is just south town, that little bridge, you know, down there by where.
Yeah. For the state, it's right in there.
That one's scheduled for late July or July sometime, I should say. And then our project on E sixteen is July or May, late May, early June, you know, so there's.
It's busy.
There's gonna be a lot of stuff going on, uh which is good. I've already talked to the DOT. We're gonna, he's gonna come down. We're gonna drive all the roads and figure out where we think traffic could maybe go, try to get a little head ahead of this, if you remember here a couple of years ago.
I already had one, the other one asked about dust control ready for the summer.
Yeah, you know, and so.
Trying to get ahead of it instead of being behind it.
Absolutely. We were behind the eight all the last time because, you know, that traffic just, boom, all of a sudden it's all on our gravel roads and, you know, so kind of just a heads up where we could do, we talked with the foreman, you know, so the bridge is gonna be out right, right in here. You know, so uh you know, coming up here isn't gonna get you any, many better. So we, we assume what's gonna happen is the traffic's gonna either try to come up, you know, they're not gonna get there from there. So they're gonna have to come up and over, go on forward, maybe over here and either come up, do this or this. And it's just, you know, here there's a little uncertainty. I'm pretty sure that's gonna get used again. But here I believe they probably would come over here and try to, and try to work their way out one way or the other. That's what I'm assuming. So what we'll do is we'll drive them and we had to put dust control here. We did it on two ten, we had a house, a couple of them there, dust control, because that got a lot of use. Uh this is gonna be used and I just kind of some wandering around, you're gonna go put some there. So um yeah, so that's, that's what we're gonna look into.
They're gonna do it in the summer and that's what they do.
Yeah, and so while then they gotta get the project done though, too. They got forty two working days, so.
Well, that's a tight, that's a tight box.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so it's, we've cranked it down, but so anyhow, that's kind of on the, I'll have this agreement on here to approve. The city of Vale, I have to approve it. The, the, the uh board approves it and then I'll, I'll have an agreement between us and the city of Vale saying that we'll basically take care of all costs because it's on our, so they won't have any expense. So we'll have that here hopefully next week or soon. Uh the uh sign replacement, if you remember, uh they had a program where you could get up to ten thousand dollars. We did get that. So, you know, we had to submit that on January second. It's a good thing we did because they did run out of money. And so we did that like this first thing on that Tuesday morning. And so we were, we were, I got a letter that we're gonna get a check for ten thousand dollars for signs. So.
Nice.
Uh Farm Bureau meeting. Uh you know, I usually talk about facilities, equipment, projects. Uh I don't know if there's anything specific you guys want to talk about. I am gonna bring up our main job. We've got something to get people starting to think about talking about, you know, what's the, what's the long-term solution there? Um those buildings are getting old.
I think we should bring up some of the legislation that was proposed earlier.
Yeah.
You know, the requirement maintainers to be certified.
They bought that. That was a Farm Bureau.
I think it needs to be brought into these guys. I don't know if all of them understand that that was proposed.
Yeah.
That's where it came from?
Came from Farm Bureau, yeah. I mean, I remember seeing it. I'm a Farm Bureau member on their questionnaire.
You know what I have learned though, is Farm Bureau may have brought it up, but somebody probably brought it to them that thought it was a great idea.
Them behind it.
Yeah, you, you don't know. I mean, somebody who knows somebody who's in the legislature and really, you know, so we're gonna push it. I, I, I guess, I don't know. Uh the whole process, but and at the end of the day, we're probably already doing a lot of the things that the, that the legislations requiring, you know, so.
To me though, if you bring it up to our local Farm Bureau members that are active, when they meet with other county Farm Bureau members and they say, well, this is a good thing, at least when we pleaded our case to say, no, it's not.
I, I, I agree, Dave. I think it really I don't know that it needed to rise to the level of having the legislature debate it. I just don't.
Exactly.
You know, that, that would be my point is if you got an issue, this is what we have these forums for. Bring those issues to us and we'll, we'll explain what we're doing and we'll try, you know, let's deal with that locally. Let's not have that debate in the state house.
That's right. That's the reason we have county engineer. That's the reason we have a county board supervisors.
That's exactly right.
We have county roads.
I just don't. Yeah.
Done. I mean, if I could see this going through, I would have seen my model way after the must be trained firefighter to train to a level, no certification and the training can be done locally. Is how that, so I mean, any local fire chief can sign off that X, Y, Z's got the training.
Yeah, whether they do or not.
Well, let's hope that they're actually getting the training, but it, it's a local training option. So if you got a new motor grader, they come in, watch two videos and according to a local training, they're certified. Well, I mean, that's how I perceive it, perceive it.
The question I would ask is, do we not want them trained? You know, I mean, everybody, everybody wants their people to know their job, whether it's a firefighter or whether it's a.
Call the guy in from the branch, you gotta give them some expert training.
Yeah, I guess my point is that. I feel we're doing it already and they haven't been hauled down to tie legislation to it.
Maybe there's counties that aren't, though, that's the problem. I mean, we don't know. I mean, we're being responsible. Maybe there's counties out there that aren't.
Yeah, that could very well be.
What's it gonna fix? Because there is a county that didn't give good training, so now they're going to punish the and make it more difficult.
That's to my point.
What's it gonna fix? Is it gonna stop all washboards or? No, because I mean, that's weather. I mean, you know.
And it's, it's happens, you know, full well across the state that everybody is a critic of the roads and.
Two things, snow removal, what's the gravel road look like?
And they all see it and have an opinion and.
And everybody's better than the blade guy.
Yeah.
In their, in their dis, in their area.
Yeah, pretty much. And the last, it's kind of like your best units in the army are your first, the one you came from, the one you're going to. And that's your best motor grader for the one you used to have and the next one you're getting. It's just, that is so true because they had guys around the desert area, can't you get that other guy back, you know? And then the other guy that was here goes somewhere else. It's just, man, this is the best blade armor we've been.
You know, yeah.
I don't know.
Goes back to remember that poem that Henry got written by Chris Brandt with the maintainer and.
Yeah. Yeah, but yeah, to that point, to that, that legislation, I'm more concerned about the, the uh, the committee elimination uh bill and the CERT Act committee. Because that I think could be, it, it could be one of these things that just kind of sneaks in and they just.
I brought that up.
You know, it just, all of a sudden it happens and we don't know what's, what's happening. All of a sudden it's like, I don't know, we're, we're cutting that because then we're gonna do this only here. And that could be really problematic.
I brought that up to Stu Anderson on Freight Advisory Council about your committee.
Yeah.
And he's, he's, he's pretty well convinced that what'll happen is that committee will maintain, be maintained through the commissioners.
I don't like that. That's a problem. It shouldn't be changed at all.
Well, I don't think so either. And that's what I said. I said, why would you fix something that's not broke? In fact, you got an example that the whole nation should probably follow.
Yeah, and I think if you have an opportunity to talk to someone, just say, just let it go. There's no, there's no compelling argument to change this. Now, and here's, here's, here's the problem is that you put it under commission, okay? Now all of a sudden you have this commission that could have a bias towards urban populations because there, there've been attempts to change that, okay, to put more emphasis on population, you know? So, so if that happens, well, all of a sudden then the factor for urban areas goes up and our factors go down accordingly. And so that, that's problematic.
Yeah, don't worry about me. That's what I brought up.
Yep.
So I, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be down there tomorrow. I'm gonna talk to Jason and Steve both and and say this, this is a bad thing. You guys should not support this.
Well, it's like what we were talking about earlier. Rural keeps getting for Cinderella, but we aren't getting a nice dress for a pumpkin.
Well, and, and this could be sort of a backdoor way of doing it. Say, well, what's the, what's the problem with having the commission? What, what, what does the commission have? Why would they have any interest in our rural roadways?
Good question. We'll wait to see how they answer that.
Basically, you added a whole nother step to the equation.
Yeah, I think it complicated it instead of making it simpler. Right now it works.
Governor yourself and it's worked good.
Exactly. We self-regulate.
Yeah, I understand taking away these commissions that are basically creating issues, but one that works. I mean, they were supposed to, that was what they were supposed to do with this group. They, this task force was supposed to find the commissions that didn't work.
Right. Obviously. So then it begs the question, why are they even looking at this one?
Yeah, well, you can tell yourself why. You just explain why.
That's why.
Exactly. That's our objective in the, that's my theory. That's my theory, Jim.
I found it. You guys got a second? This is, this to me was really dope from Henry. Chris Brandt, who's passed away from Asklaw, made a neat little maintainer, a lot of spare parts out of this. Remember that? And you remember that column he did? And he wrote a poem summing up the maintainer man. In fact, it's called The Maintainer Man. Richard Henry Ripples, whatever his name, when the roads are bad, he gets the blame. Up early in the morning, quits early in the day, won't pay attention to what people say. The coffee shops are all buzzed, talking about the things he does. He's going too fast, he's going too slow. Get out of the way, watch him go. Whereas the blade man hasn't, haven't seen him for a week. He went by this morning while you were asleep. He's cutting too deep, he's cutting too shallow. What in the world is wrong with that fellow? He's pushing all the gravel in the ditch, trying to please people, is he? Soon, soon he has everyone in a tis, but I guess we all like him as he is.
That's pretty good.
It is good.
Yeah, that pretty much hits it.
Yeah, it, it does, you know, he's gonna post that.
Got it framed down at the shop.
Yeah.
All right. Very good.
Very good, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so uh, so yeah, we'll talk about, you know, a number of those things and we have the maps, the projects in the upcoming year, the bridge projects, the favorite projects. And, uh, so, there were a few things that I had already talked about, the area projects that we have, and the Hunger Canyons meeting next Friday. Uh, we're going, I'd let, okay, John know that, okay, go on, okay. And we're, we've got an application in for a stilling basin, um, a mile north, mile. West or east, I reckon right in that general area there, exact location, I guess, but there's a structural plate. Um, that has a large scour hole at the outlet end of it, so we've got an application in, hoping to get about forty thousand Hunger Canyon funds to take care of that. So, we got that in, that will be put in that, hopefully approved in tomorrow. And as well, continuing to try to get some of that Hunger Canyon's money, so. Good deal, other than that, who's all going to the, to the capital, a mile. Two of you, okay, I'll probably see you there.
Yep, I'll see you.
And, uh.
We're gonna head out later, uh, soon we can get down there, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll be going in early, so. Okay, well, hopefully we can make a difference, Highway thirty, yeah, make sure you bring it up, yeah. All them senators need to hear about it, vote, just put it in priority, yeah, nobody say build it, say, put it as a priority, yeah.
Talk about it, we'll see you down there in.
Sounds good, yeah, yeah, to you, thank you, sir.
All right, last item on the agenda today is take action for the appointment of Andrew, uh, Sanderson to the conservation board.
Well, it's an approval, second.
A discussion, sounds like a good guy, uh, all in favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, same sign, chair goes aye. Any citizen input, uh, anybody on Zoom have anything they'd like to discuss in the citizen input? And the raise up. Uh, Cindy.
Oh, very good.
I think I heard you mention it, but Senate File four-one-one is gonna be discussed in subcommittee today, were you aware of that? I just wanna make, came in a little bit late and I thought I heard you talking about it.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and it's gonna be, there's no public input to it, but it is going to be, you can, um, get the link to listen if you're interested. To do that, and the other question I had, I'm wondering how many acres are currently being rented in the county farm versus, I know there's C R P and rental, how many acres? How many?
One twenty-eight.
One twenty. I mean, I knew some was in C R P and some was being rented, so I'm just, I don't unders, quite understand this, so when it's being rented, where does that rental money go currently? I mean, is it going to the general fund or? Okay, so then, if it goes into C R P, and I hear you're talking about ten percent or whatever, so is that money also gonna go into the general fund? Or is there gonna be a deficit in the general fund because you're switching from rental to C R P?
Barnes deficit is.
Both should go.
The both of them, they're all the general fund, the. Hypothetically, a deficit of that ten percent could be.
Right.
So that would be the most deficit there would be, Cindy, would be that ten percent that, uh, is, uh. We haven't really found a hundred percent sure place where that's gonna end up at yet, but we have till Friday to do that, so.
Which right now.
But, you know, currently, you know, with other C R P contracts we have, we never get a chance to. Dictate or realize any of that ten percent funds, cause the way it's set up, so. By doing what we're doing, we're gonna try to at least make a difference with that ten percent within the taxpayers of Crawford County. I, I think it's for the taxpayers.
So it's just the ten percent that you're talking about going into other, I know, and I think you mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, Kyle, that. Like it would go into tap or other areas that we're currently supporting, but so now those things that we're supporting are gonna be taken out of the general budget, so it's like we're not double paying them?
No, no, that's just, just how hard they'd be receiving their funding is true, I mean, would be the, would, would, is how we see it, Cindy, I mean, it just. Or maybe even expanding some help to tap or whatever, you know, just taking that ten percent and making Crawford County a better, better place where citizens.
Well, and I understand that, and that's all great, but I'm just, I mean, you guys are so worried, and we're all worried about, um, not having money to do everything, and our taxes are going up, so I'm just thinking. It's just another, I don't wanna see our taxes go up because of this, and we're taking money out of the general, and how is that gonna be replenished? That's kinda where I was going with it.
Legitimate point, Cindy, I think, for bringing it up, but currently, we have several other C R P contracts that are. Facilitated with a local farmer that gets ten percent of them, and we don't get to see any of that money, so we're trying to work that together and bring this all back into where it's. It's gonna help our general fund and for other nonprofits within the county.
Gotcha, and that makes sense, and I appreciate that, uh, for the explanation, I must have missed the meeting where you explained that, so I didn't quite understand it all. But I did reach out to Craig and thank you, Craig, for responding, um, I do have a concern, since I am a, a neighbor to the county farm, when you talked about the drone training. And the extra hunting, um, as a neighbor, I really have concerns about the drone training being. Cause that would be, if they get off, thing right into our property, so I guess I would ask you, before you really went down that road. As far as, you know, starting that, that you would check with the neighbors on that one?
Yep. And that was just brought up to us when we were talking to superintendent, uh, concerning collaborative learning throughout the county. And what they could potentially use the county farm for, cause initially, we kinda thought about maybe having that collaborative learning actually farm a portion of it, so they could. You know, learn the elements of farming while they were in high school, and that's when he mentioned, well, you know, if we did, if, if it isn't directly farming, cause we're not to that point yet. With our collaborative county learning, that maybe we would use it as, you know, a place where we do out there and learn how to fly drones or that sort of thing, that's where I got that from.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, I would just, before you get down that road, that you kinda talk to the neighbors.
Understood, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy, for answering all your questions.
Yep.
Anybody else have a hand up that wants to ask a question or be involved in citizens input? Going once, going twice, we'll call our meeting adjourned, I need a motion?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Any more discussion, otherwise I'll call motion, all in favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody. All right, it's the, it's the city sound. All right. All right, there you go, that's better with me.
We'll see you guys in the morning.
You heading down to New?